So, we're going to begin our Iowa City City Council Budget Work Session for Wednesday, January the 16th, 2019. So, we would like to end no later than 3:45, so in order so that some of us can go to the Cross Park, open house. If we can't, I don't know, we'll see. But I'm pretty sure we can work our way through it and in a very adequate way. So, the first topic is to review the proposed budget.
Yeah, I'm going to make a suggestion that we just hold this for Tuesday's work session. You're waiting on a couple of memos for us on outstanding budget items. That's mostly operating stuff, so I'd suggest we skip past that and jump right into CIP unless there's something
Sounds good to me.
...new that we need to talk about.
Makes sense.
Any objection to that?
Nope.
All right, so we'll move on to the next item, capital improvements projects. Are you going to start, Jeff?
Yeah, Dennis is going to lead off. I just want to call attention to the handouts. You have seen these handouts before. These are just updated versions of the Bike and Park Master Plan, and those will be talked about through the presentation. What you have not seen before is this big white spreadsheet. It's something that you had requested from me earlier in the year, and that is a report on the changes from last year's CIP, and you can see kind of the magnitude of changes that we go through. So, this will call attention to projects that have increased or decreased in price, projects that have shifted. So, as we go through the different divisions, you'll be able to see and ask questions if you have them about why a project has changed from last year's CIP.
Okay, very good. So, Dennis, are you going to be the first to speak?
Yep, I'm going to go ahead and kick it off, and I'm Jason Havel and Ron Kanaki. I'm Dennis Bach, I'm the Finance Director, and I'm going to start with a brief overview of the entire program and the process that we went through to develop this program and just kind of talk about, you know, overall how the money is being spent, where it's coming from, and then I want to hand it off to Jason and Ron, and the rest of the department has to talk more specifically about the projects that are within that plan. So, as you can see, the first slide is the schedule. We started this progress, our process, late summer, and this process runs fairly parallel to the city's budget process. And September 4th, the Finance Department sent out forms to each of the departments along with instructions to update the current program and to get new projects. On September 25th, those forms with the new projects and amended projects were due back to the Finance Department, and then once those are back, then we assemble them into a preliminary report. And through the month of October, there's a committee that meets several times, and we discuss those projects, how they work together, the timing of them, and an update and make changes to those projects and the overall program. And then, actually, that's running parallel with the budget process, and then in early December, we start pulling the operating budget and the capital budget together to see how they work together and pull all the information to one document. And then, on December 21st, we released the budget book, which included the operating budget and the capital CIP program into that. And that leads us to today, where we're here to talk about the program and all the projects that have been assembled in that budget book. And so, in the budget book, there is, includes the five-year program, it has the overview reports, and then detailed worksheets, and you should be able to follow along or read for additional information within that budget book as we present today. So, I'm going to move into the overall spending program. This is a pie chart for the spending by division, and as usual, streets is the number-one spending division, and that's primarily, the asphalt overlay is the largest portion of that, and we also have a handful of major reconstruction projects that are also incorporated into that total. The second-largest pioneer is the wastewater treatment, and there's a couple of major projects in there for reconstruction of portions of the plant, some of the older portions, that have pushed that number up a little bit. And then, the third-largest is the transit, which is almost entirely made up of a future replacement of the transportation facility. And so, this kind of gives you a general idea of which departments, of which projects and dollar amounts in the program. I will point out that the City Manager's slice of $16, $6.5 million is on the kind of around 5 o'clock there, I guess you could say, on the pie chart. That is for the access center, so that is in this, this year's CIP program. So, how we are paying for these projects, for the funding sources, and $163.5 million with the funding sources. The number-one funding source is our general obligation bonds. So, that, other than the water and sewer and the Enterprise Fund projects, street bonds is our number-one funding source for most of the street and parks and other types of improvements that are being presented today. The number-two source is federal funds. Now, we'll note that there's a large portion of that federal fund that we are anticipating that would be for the replacement of the transit facility, but also that's primarily for street reconstruction, like Dodge Street would be a large portion of that, or American Engine Road. And that also includes another portion of that would be airport, which is about 90% of the airport projects are funded from federal funding. The third-largest piece of that is the road use tax funding, and I talked about, you know, bonding for a lot of road projects. Most of those are the major reconstruction. The road use piece is primarily for asphalt overlay and other miscellaneous, like the ADA curb ramp, traffic signals, and some of the other types of improvements. And the next slide is for the program by year, and it's typical that we see more dollars or more spending in the first year of the program, and it reduces down at the fifth year. Now, in this scenario, as you look at that pie, or that bar chart, 2022 is very high, and that's because of the $18 million that's in there for the transit facility has pushed that, that higher than you would typically see in this, this form of presentation. And then, in 2023, it's also high, and there's pretty much two projects planned out there that are pushing that number, and one of that is the Dodge Street Reconstruction Project, which is a pretty significant project that would be doing joint with the state. And then also, as I mentioned, the wastewater reconstruction project to rebuild the Digestory Complex. But this is how we anticipate as far as dollars and spending, and when these projects will be done, how it looks graphically. So, if you don't have any questions about the overall program, I'm going to go and turn over to Jason here and Ron, and they can start to take you through the rest of the program.
Sure. Ron Kanaki, Public Works Director. Obviously, we thank you for the time to sit down and walk through the capital project with you. The location that this starts on in the budget book is page 49, is the Capital Projects Section. In that, about around page 513 is where the detailed descriptions of the projects begin. So, we have 100, about 143 slides left to go through in regards to the ongoing projects. We have it split up into three sections. There's an ongoing section, so those are the projects that are under construction now or will be shortly. We have a section that is split up by departments, and then we have an on-the-radar section, which will go over projects that are, that we feel are ones that will potentially come up here in a short timeframe that weren't included in the program itself. So, we'll go ahead and start off with the ongoing projects. The first project is permitting software upgrade. So, this is a joint venture between NDS and Public Works to update our building permitting software, and then also incorporate our, some of our right-of-way management permits in with that software. This project was actually just kicked off at the last council meeting. The contract for the moving forward with this was approved. Second ongoing project is a public works facility. This one, they have started putting the footings in. They'll actually move into the warm storage area here next week and start renovating that for the use of public safety. In this project, we do have an additional $700,000 as we move into the solar facilities or addition of solar array to this project, and we'll be working with Newman-Monsin to get the details of that project worked out here in the next month.
All right, moving on to the landfill leachate pumping system. So, this is the dual extraction system out at the landfill that looks to remove not only leachate but also landfill gas from the area. So, this is one that is more or less complete, just finishing up with a few small items with this project. The Myrtle and Riverside Intersection Signalization, so this is the project that is being completed in conjunction with the overlay on Riverside Drive. This is, will include signalization of the intersection as well as a median that'll be installed on Riverside Drive. Right now, that project sits, the median has been installed, the overlay will be completed in the spring. We're hoping that some of the signalization will occur this winter, but again, it really just depends on weather and what the contractor is able to complete. Looking at completion, probably late spring, early summer for that one. The Riverside Drive pedestrian tunnel, so as a reminder, this is along Riverside Drive, just south of the Myrtle Intersection. This will be on the west side of Riverside Drive. The intent of the project would be to put a pedestrian tunnel through the railroad embankment that would, as part of the project, would then complete the sidewalk connection basically from Benton up to Myrtle Avenue. We are proceeding with design. This one's been on hold for a little bit as we've been working through some delays with the railroad and some issues there. At this point, we're kind of full speed ahead with design, hopefully looking at construction yet in 2019. The Riverside Drive and Governor Street overlay, again, this is kind of, all of these projects are kind of in that same area. This is the overlay that will be essentially from the rocky shore, so the Iowa City city limits, down to Sturgis Corner, and that'll be that overlay on Riverside Drive. It also includes the overlay on Governor Street, basically from Burlington up to the Dodge Intersection. Along with that Governor Street work, we'll also be including bicycle lanes on Governor Street as well as bicycle lanes on Dodge, kind of for that same stretch.
Jason, with regard to both of these Riverside Drive projects, I don't see them listed in this big master matrix or whatever one calls that.
Yep, and I think part of that is because it would have actually been past-year monies. Is that correct? So...
Right, are you talking about the, in the changes or just in the current program?
Changes, not current, no.
So, I should not expect to see
Yeah, this is
Jason just described on this.
Yeah, these are things that have changed from, like in the 19 program would have changed, and I believe much of that program was in 18 for the overlay.
The Burlington and Madison Intersection Improvements, this is one that we're working to wrap up design and hopefully looking at construction for 2019. This will include improvements, the intersection, new signal at the intersection, new curb ramps. We are also looking at including bike lanes that will cross the Iowa River, so basically bicycle lanes from Madison over to Riverside Drive. As part of this project, we'll also be restriping Madison for lane to three-lane conversion.
When is that going to be done, anyway?
Right now, we're looking at completion hopefully late 19, depending on where we end up with the DOT bidding cycle. That may slide, but that's, we're really shooting for getting that bid late spring, and then hopefully that would allow us to get construction yet this year.
And the bike lanes will run north-south from where to, where to where?
So, it goes from, I believe, Court North to Market, I believe is the scope of that. The Idyllwild Stormwater Drainage Diversion, so this is a project near the Idyllwild Development. Essentially, what this will do is it will allow for lower-flow events to still drain through the Idyllwild Development, and that's important because they need that, that turnover for those ponds and just to keep water moving through that development. But for those larger rain events, it will actually divert the runoff directly to the Iowa River. Looking at finishing design here, again, probably looking at spring completion for bidding and then construction in 2019. The Normandy Drive Storm Sewer Replacement, this will replace some storm sewer that's in poor shape. It will also make some modifications to the existing structure. Essentially, what that will allow us to do is improve the ability to pump during flood events from this structure, so pretty minor improvements, but should hopefully help with operations for future events. The Burlington and Clinton Intersection Improvements, this is one that we started construction in 2018. Right now, as it stands, for the most part, the signal work has been more or less completed. There's a few things they'll have to do to kind of tie over to the new signal completely, and then they'll be back in the spring to finish up with the permanent paving of the curb ramps. But most of the water main and a lot of the paving work has been completed.
Can, can people cross the streets safely now?
They should have at least temporary paving for all the curb ramps out there now. So, yes, they should have the existing curb ramps. And I should also note that this will, in the spring, also include the four-lane to three-lane conversion on Clinton Street, and then the inclusion of bike lanes from Church down to Benton.
And when this will be completed?
I would say early spring. It's going to really depend on temperatures. I think they can start as soon as it gets warm enough to do the pouring the curb ramps and doing the, the striping. Pedestrian Mall Reconstruction, as many of you know, this is a two-year project, so they were focusing on kind of the north-south section this year. We'll look at reconstruction of the pedestrian mall, new paved surface, revised and improved planning areas, as well as new stage and canopy. Next year, we, or I guess this year now, 2019, will continue with the east-west section and looking at completion of the project this year.
All right, moving on to some of the parks projects. Creekside Park on the east side of town is under construction as we speak. The park is fenced off and unfortunately not open to the public right now. Got a lot of clearing done along the creek because this includes creek access, a new shelter, a new restroom, and then a community orchard space next to it on some of the newer flood property. Riverfront and Crossings Park, just down there yesterday, the restroom and shelter are coming along very nicely. It was starting to turn green before the snow came in, so we're looking forward to a July 20th grand opening party down there. The final money, money in the funding for this is primarily for the traffic circle, inside the traffic circle, and as you remember, we're going to relocate the Snellson sculpture to the inside of the traffic circle, and then we'll finish up with a park sign and some landscaping in that area. Most of the lights are in, and there's a few more signs to be placed there.
Quick question, if you went back one real quick. Is that supposed to be 1.2 million?
Correct.
Yeah, please.
Well, I just, because I was going to ask if we can have this, the whole slide thing available and then available for the public, so you might want to add a zero.
Sure, thank you.
And then Hickory Hill Park Trail and Bridge Project, just successfully bid this part of, part of the project, and they will start working this spring, probably complete most of it this spring. The REAP grant work, though however, started last week, and there's been significant invasive species removal just in the last week, so the park's already starting to look different. Just better, better shape, but looking a little bit different.
All right, so the next section, we'll move on to annual projects, and so these are the projects where there's money available annually, so every year in the program. And we'll kick things off with the Bicycle Master Plan.
Good afternoon, Kent Ralston, Train Station Planner. Knowing time is of the essence, I'll run through some of the Bike Master Plan projects relatively quickly. I think most of you know that the Bike Master Plan was adopted in August 2017, and I think we've made a lot of good progress since then. The planning process was about nine months long, and also, we have since implemented a standing bicycle advisory committee. That same bicycle advisory committee that helped implement, or excuse me, helped plan for the planning document is now in place to help us implement it as well. So, we meet with them about every other month, at a minimum quarterly, to talk about a lot of the policies, educational components, and encouragement components of the plan that really we won't discuss today through the capital projects. What I'd like, like to do quickly is quickly orient you, I believe you all have this in front of you. Just to orient you fairly quickly, there's a lot of information on this graphic. What you'll see first are two different colors of tags, which represent projects. In orange are the projects that were identified in the master plan for 2017 and 2018, and in the blue, the projects that were identified in the plan for 19 through 22, which was the five-years CIP at the time the plan was adopted. Very quickly, I just want to note that 2019 is going to be a really big year for the Bicycle Master Plan. Jason already covered a number of projects that will be occurring as part of larger capital improvement projects, but there's a host of other projects as well that'll be completed in 2019. Really going to be exciting year, and I think with all the Bike Master Plan, bike lanes and other projects that'll be completed, it's really going to add more on-street facilities in one capital year than we have today in total in Iowa City. Quickly, just running through some of the projects, I'll start with some of the projects that were to be completed in 2017 and 2018 are now being pushed to 2019 for various reasons. Jason had already mentioned the Clinton and Madison four-to-three lane conversions that included bike lanes. Also, we have the Mormon Trek four-to-three lane conversion project that was started last fall and will be completed this coming year, which add bike lanes from Melrose essentially down to Highway One. Also, we have the Myrtle and Riverside Intersection, which is another project that Jason mentioned. Along with that project, we also are installing a number of bike components, the pedestrian Refuge Island that was, that was identified, as well as a climbing bike lane, we call it, up the Myrtle Hill. So, Myrtle's not actually wide enough to have bike lanes on both sides, but because it's a challenge getting up the hill, we'll actually have one bike lane for those folks heading west going up the hill. Also, a number of bike wayfinding signs will be installed so folks can find their way from the Iowa River Corridor Trail onto Benton Street, which will be also slated for bike lanes in the coming years. A couple of the other major bike lane projects, again, that Jason mentioned, were the Governor and Dodge Street bike lanes. What's interesting about those two is they'll both be buffered bike lanes, which will be our first buffered bike lanes for the most part in town. So, rather than just a single white stripe, we'll actually have a couple feet of pavement markings to sort of get that bicyclist a little bit further away from the adjacent travel lane, which will be a really good project. A few other projects I just wanted to make note of is the Highway One side path. I'm assuming that'll come up later in the presentation today, but that'll be the trail that runs from Sunset to Mormon Trek. Years ago, the portion from Orchard to Sunset was complete, but this completes that loop onto Mormon Trek, which then gets bicyclists to the existing sidewalk and the future bike lanes. So, we're really starting to develop this, this sort of bike path around the metro area, which was a major component of the Bike Master Plan. The other one that I wanted to mention quickly is Gilbert Street. That is in 2020, but I wanted to mention that we have a functional design for the four-to-three lane conversion on Gilbert Street complete. The engineering department is now hiring someone to complete the final design, which they'll be able to bring to you in the coming months. So, most of these projects are nested in larger projects, some of which you've already heard about, some of which will be coming later in the presentation, but I'm happy to answer any questions you have. The other thing I wanted to mention quickly is the $900,000 that's identified in the CIP really is just a fraction of the actual overall funding that you all are putting into bike and pedestrian planning, because again, a lot of these bike improvements are part of much bigger capital improvements. Any questions for me now?
For the buffered bike, for the buffered bike lanes, how much more expensive is it to put the little white posts up on the bike lanes?
I don't know if I know
Appropriate here, but just in general cost-wise, how much bigger of a cost is that?
You know, I don't know for sure, Rockne. I think the cost would be relatively low compared to these, the overall capital project. We did look into whether or not we could use those on Dodge and Governor, but because there are so many driveways along both those corridors, it would have been hard to actually use those, bollards I call them, but yeah.
Any other questions for Kent?
Thanks.
All right, moving on, the annual stormwater improvements, this is, again, is an annual account that helps with basically improvements throughout the stormwater system. So, this could be everything from intakes to manholes, storm sewer pipe, any of those improvements. Also looks at ditches and other methods of conveying storm water and varies throughout the city based on the products of need. The annual traffic signal projects, this account looks to provide for whether it's new signals, replacement of signal equipment, or it can be updating of signal equipment that happens from time to time, and it can be related to other projects or standalone, again, as needed. Traffic calming, so obviously you know we have our traffic calming program that relies on neighborhood input and that process. For those projects that do make it through that process and we look to construct something, this is essentially how we would pay for that. For our annual curb ramp program, this is one that looks throughout the city and picks some locations annually to go in and install new or updated curb ramps. Historically, what we focus on is, are those areas where there may be pedestrian facilities, but there are no curb ramps, but there are other areas where we update those to meet current requirements.
Are there lots of areas that still need curb, curb ramps?
I think there's certainly some areas that need curb ramps. There's certainly a lot more areas that need them to be updated.
And is there like a greater plan to meet some of that in the future, to do some of this?
Yeah, we have, but we have information that basically lists, I guess you could say, the condition of curb ramps throughout the city or curb locations, and so we look at those, whether it's through this program or through other projects, ways that we can, can improve those.
And if someone came and made a, like a complaint about access, what would be the response? Is that
So typically, we, what we would do is we would take those complaints and we would include those on our list for future projects for consideration, and again, whether, those could be incorporated a number of different ways, but we would look to incorporate those as we're able to with future projects.
Okay, thank you.
If I, I'm sorry, Masco.
Go ahead, go ahead.
No, please.
You know, the budget, like 500,000 is just like for certain ramp that you're going to, you're going to do it, or what's this for then? If we have like many, as Bruce said, that need to be like, to have a remnant, is this going to take, the budget is for all of them, or is this for some of them, or are you going to do it all this year, or?
So, I think this would be an ongoing process, so this would not be for all ramps throughout the city, but
Okay.
This is also not the only pot of money, I guess, that is used for curb ramp repairs, but it is one way that we focus on, this product focuses specifically on curb ramps at various locations.
Okay, that means this budget is going to use only to do those curb ramps?
Correct, yep.
And maybe you're not going to finish all of them, next year you do another one?
Yeah, so we, yep, we basically spend this money, or the annual allowance for only curb ramps.
And I don't, I don't ever see this line going away, even if we get curb ramps everywhere, over time, they fall out of compliance, just like you have potholes in roads, you get the heave, heaving of concrete and just general cracking and, and state of disrepair. So, we'll always be going in and rehabbing them.
This is like ongoing budget, so you can use it.
This is an every-year deal.
Sure.
At some point in the past, the staff has presented us with a map showing curb ramps throughout the city, at least the one, sites where curb ramps are needed or they need to be upgraded. It's a pretty extensive, or pretty large number of sites that need to be improved, so we're just trying to do it year by year by year by year by year.
And new projects, I'm assuming we do it in the beginning as a part of the project?
Correct, yep.
I'll just ask because the thought came, what about sidewalk infill? Is there a line item for sidewalk infill?
So, there's no longer a dedicated line item for sidewalk infill. The way we've been approaching that now is that we would look at those projects and propose them as, as individual projects. So, there's still the ability to do those, but there's not the, the line item that was Our annual pavement rehabilitation program, obviously a big portion of this every year is the asphalt overlay, but it also includes PCC patching, crack sealing, other, I guess, sort of pavement management projects. One thing I wanted to make sure and point out with this one, we actually are in the process, we have an RFP out there right now, looking to get a consultant on board to help us take a fresh look at this and really kind of an overarching look at our program, not only current condition, but what we want things to be long-term, and have them come in and help us with trying to set sort of that in and help us with trying to set sort of that baseline level that we want our facilities to be maintained at and help us get a better understanding of what that initial cost might be to get us there, and then also what the annual cost would be to, to keep us there, as well as helping to plan out longer-term for projects that we would want to look at. And certainly that would be helpful come budget time and also if we ever were to pursue a discussion on local option sales tax. So good information to have.
I was just gonna get in that, you know, every community's different, but sometimes they're helpful for sort of point of reference. I think Cedar Rapids, correct, is a substantial portion of their local option sales tax, is that correct?
I think Waterloo may as well.
And we always sort of compare property taxes. When you're sort of trying to pick that amount, of course, we have to respond to the local needs here, but how much do we compare with other cities in terms of percentage of our budget that's focused on that? Because certainly anecdotally, you know, you guys are looking at the whole picture. We tend to look at things very narrowly, but there certainly do seem to be some streets, as we've talked about in the past, that, you know, Washington College, I think, needs some work. How do we compare with other cities?
I don't know the answer to that offhand. I think it's, you certainly could take a look at it, but I think it's going to be difficult to have an apples-to-apples comparison, just given that there's so many different ways that, you know, streets are impacted. So you have not only your, you know, your annual, but you may have other projects, you know, you may have some places that spend more on maintenance and more, and other places that may spend more on new construction or reconstruction. So I don't know if there's one answer to that, but I think based on just, again, anecdotally, the conversations we've had with consultants, both for this RFP and other discussions, it seems like we're, I don't know if we're the best, but we're certainly not the worst. I think we're at least in that ballpark.
Thanks, Jason.
When do we expect the-
Sorry.
When do we expect the, that study to be completed?
Those are, or the proposals are due the end of this month, so I think we'd probably be looking at getting underway here in the next month, month and a half, and then I would say probably maybe end of the summer, something like that, might have something ready to review.
Your list includes the brick, and I remember from the discussion when, since we worked on the streets, brick streets recently, that that was very, it's very costly to do that. So this 11 million probably includes that exorbitant amount for that. Is there a plan, like, Street A will be done this year, Street B next year, Street C the following year?
Well, really what this includes is more spot repairs of brick streets, so it wouldn't really be a situation where we would be replacing entire blocks of brick street. Typically, those would be separate projects.
Stick on its own, okay, thank you.
Are there plans to, like, when I think about the Brown Street and all that stuff, are there plans to replace all those streets or maintain maybe a few of those brick streets throughout, on certain streets?
I would say there's not any current projects to reconstruct any of those. I think, at least my understanding is, is more or less, we'll maintain what we have.
Sure, okay. They're beautiful streets.
This has been an issue for a long time because it's so costly to repair and rebuild brick streets, but while retaining them as brick streets. But they're, for the most part, really crucial parts of the historic character of particular neighborhoods. And then there's a few brick streets, I guess, that are really kind of outside of the normal parts of the city we think of as historic. So we could just kind of rip them out and pave them over, and that would be less expensive, but.
Nice.
So anyhow, we, we have no formal plan, is the bottom line of that.
Great, thanks. Underground electrical facilities, so what this project looks to do is those circumstances where we have, often if we're relocating electrical facilities, we would look at taking those from overhead to underground. A little bit about how the process works, a lot of times, if we have, say, we have a project where we'll need them to relocate electrical facilities, the utility would pay to relocate those to another aerial location, and we would pay for any upcharge to basically go from overhead to underground. Sometimes that occurs, again, with our projects, it may, there may be opportunities where redevelopment occurs, and we can kind of coordinate with them and, and help to make that a little more economical to go from, again, overhead to underground. Our annual bridge maintenance and repair project, so one big piece of this is every other year we go through and do bridge condition inspections, just to try and, again, kind of keep a handle on the condition of our existing structures. With that, that, a lot of times through that process, we'll get some minor repairs and maintenance that's recommended, that would come out of this account as well. This is not meant to handle the large-scale replacement or, or larger rehab projects, those would be individual projects. But again, this is just kind of annual money to help us maintain those structures.
And this budget being like steady over the years, or sometime you use the whole thing, sometime you don't, or?
I think it's something where the use will vary, again, kind of depends on what's needed. So I think sometime, there'll be some years where we won't use it all, and it'll roll over, and then we'll use it in a future year, but certainly it's all used in the end.
Sure.
So the bridge that's currently, I think the block, it's already blocked off, the little, I forget the name of the bridge, but over by Jefferson-
Governor.
Governor Street?
Yep.
That would not come out of this 900,000?
No, but that's actually a little different because that's actually on Highway One, so that's actually a DOT project.
Well, it is.
But if it were our project, then correct, that would come out of its own project.
Okay.
Annual sewer main replacement, so this project does a few different things. It can be everything from point repairs, so if you have an issue with sanitary sewer, it would go in and do that repair, it could repair manholes. In addition, we also do preventative maintenance, and we do sewer lining to help extend the life of our sewer system.
Hi there, Darian Nagel-Gam with the Transportation Services Department. We have two annual recurring projects, the first of which is our parking facility restoration and repair, and this is an annual project that includes concrete repair, sealants, repair of joints, more or less is just upkeep and upgrades to the facilities to keep them in good shape and make sure that we can extend their lifetime as far as we possibly can. And the second one is the transit bus shelter replacement, replacement and expansion program. Phase one is going to occur this spring, we're going to be installing nine new shelters, five on the east side, four on the west side. This will happen, we'll begin that project in April. And then phase two, we'll add another six new shelters, four on the east side, two on the west side. And that will take us through the first two phases, and we'll pick that back up again after the transit study is completed. We didn't want to invest too heavily until we know what our transit system of the future is going to look like.
For the transit, just remind me, I think I mixed it up, all this budget for everything that you do is coming from enterprise budget or from the GIO pond, which one?
I believe this would come out of the enterprise fund.
Enterprise fund, okay.
All right, so I'm gonna move you through several of the parks and rec projects. So we'll first talk about the annual projects in our parks and recreation, and then we'll move on to the specific projects. This first one is City Hall Other Projects. These are small projects throughout this building, carpet repair, carpet replacement, painting, new, the new signs, you're seeing some of those kind of things, the repair of the historic bell outside, those kind of things to come out of this budget. Okay, and then our parks annual improvement follows along with our master plan of 2017, and I just want to thank you, we made great progress with the maintenance and renovation of our parks throughout the city following this plan. This chart shows how we're following it, and as you can see, we are on track with many of the projects. Projects completed this year, Happy Hollow Park, Pheasant Hill Park, got a playground the year before, but got new paths to the playground this year as part of the ADA path work. Mercer Park, small paths by the playgrounds were completed to help with accessibility to the new playground there. Tower Court, same thing, paths to get to the playgrounds. And when nearly all of our older playgrounds, they had the railroad ties around the, or the landscaping ties, timbers around the outside edge of the playground, makes it so that someone using some assisted devices can't get into that area. So what we're doing is taking those out and providing paved paths to get to the play areas. Highland Park, same thing, added pathways to that park. That actually came from CDBG funding, not from the CIP budget. And then Riverfront Crossing, we already talked about, and Cardigan Park was completed on the east side.
I do see some of these don't have, well, I see accessibility improvements is what, so I'm assuming all of these have accessibility already in place that aren't being approved?
Yeah, well, two things. So first of all, some of them are larger full park renovations, and of course, anytime we would renovate a park, we would address accessibility issues at the same time for the larger renovations. The smaller ones are typically where we're just going back in and retrofitting to help make the area more accessible.
Okay.
Okay, and then this is the project that actually addresses a number of those ADA concerns. As part of the Park Master Plan in 2017, we had the parks inventoried and assessed for accessibility needs, and we are slowly going around and getting those addressed, two or three parks each year.
One of the things you may want to briefly comment on, we've had a lot of discussions with the difference between the padded playground and sort of the woodchips. We know that the padded is, is more effective, but it's substantially more expensive, correct? Could you give us approximate dollar figure, and even though it is really more expensive, are there some parks where we've been able to find the funds to do the top of the line?
First of all, I would back up though and say effective, possibly more effective. There's a lot of debate out there about playground surfacing right now, and it may be more effective for certain wheelchair users, but it may not be as effective as a fall attenuation service, surface for a lot of other things. So we're trying to get a mix along with the school district throughout, throughout the city. A real ballpark cost estimate, Creekside Park, which we're in progress right now, is getting engineered wood fiber, woodchips underneath the playground. I want to say it's $4,000 to $5,000 that we're using for that part of that project. It was gonna be about $110,000 if we would have poured in place. However, two of the projects I'll talk about soon, Willow Creek and Lower City Park playgrounds will have some areas of poured-in-place surface, so.
Thank you.
Annual rec center improvements, just slowly chipping away, very long list at both of our rec centers, trying to keep them well-maintained. We're seeing, you know, a lot of use through our centers, they're becoming more welcoming spaces. Along with that use comes a lot of deferred maintenance that we're trying to, to address. You've seen a lot of it at Robert Ailey and Mercer in the last two years, and this fund allows us to do the smaller projects in, as we continue with those buildings. Inner-city bike trails, not much to say, this follows up with Kent's presentation, these are for smaller projects to do connections and some small infill trails at different Okay, now I'm gonna take over driving. Okay, so on the parks projects, you have them all listed in your book, I'm just gonna highlight, there's so many of them, I'm gonna highlight the, the newer ones that are coming up, and then some of them that have been added in 2023. So first of all, the projects that are, we're working on right now, Willow Creek Park will be on the next council agenda. This is replacement of the Willow Creek restroom, shelter, and playground. And as I just mentioned, the playground here focuses on inclusion, it will actually have a music theme, a marching band theme, which is gonna be, I can't wait to show you some of those drawings. But it will focus on accessibility, have poured in place, and a lot of things for people to do that, that don't necessarily involve climbing to the top heights of the playground. So I think it's gonna be a really interesting space. We'll set the public hearing at the next council meeting, take bids, and have this next summer will be under construction.
And when you say replacing the bathroom for Willow Creek Park, what's wrong with the bathroom that you wanna replace?
It's the age, the age of the restroom and the shelter. So it'll be replaced with structures almost identical to what's being put in at Creekside, similar to what was done at Happy Hollow following the Park Master Plan. The other large playground that we're working on right now is Lower City Park. This will be what we're calling an adventure playground, and what that means is it's gonna be built into the slope area of the park between Upper and Lower City Park, and it will have numerous slides and kind of towers to climb on. We're still working on kind of final design and concept on that, kind of in the site where the old zoo buildings were, for those of you that have been around Iowa City for a long time. Same thing, we hope to have this out to bid in the next few months, and then we will have construction over the summer. New on the list is some improvements to the City Park ballfields. Baseball is still an exciting, fun sport here in Iowa City, lots of people playing it. These are improvements to the fields, the first year focusing on player safety, so things happening around the dugouts and the fencing, we have some, I want to make sure people are safe when they're in the dugouts. Moving on to some lighting, some lighting improvements and some other projects over the next three years at City Park ballfields. The East Side Sports Site on the very far southeast side of town, this is where we're doing tree planting. If you remember the discussion from last year, this site was, has a master plan that was done to look at building ballfields and soccer fields at this site. No matter what we end up doing at the site, what we are doing now is going along the railroad edge of the property, and we'll be planting trees, so no matter what the eventual uses of the project, we'll have that growing and in place to buffer it from the railroad. Bids are, I mean specs are done on this, and we'll be bidding it soon for spring planting In this building, we have a large project coming up in 20 and 21. It is warm in here today. I have to tell you though, we are currently operating on only one of two boilers, and even with that, there's a little bit of duct tape and shoelaces involved maybe. So we're keeping it running. This will replace those systems and get them on the BAS, the building automation system for monitoring as our other buildings are. So the design is complete now, we hope to complete the first boiler replacement over the summer when we don't actually need heat in the building, so. Okay, moving on to 2020 projects, the next park for a larger renovation is Weatherby Park. The plans here are to replace the restroom, shelter, and playground, similar to what we've done at Creekside and Willow Creek, although not nearly as large of a playground as what we're doing at Willow Creek. Intent is not to do anything with the splash pad, to leave it as it is, the community garden space, the sport court, all those things remain the same. This will just simply address the shelter, the restrooms, and the small playground that's there. And we would do community meetings for this this summer to work on design with the neighbors in that area. Fair Meadows Park, also in that general area, is, we're gonna replace the playground there with a smaller playground that's aimed at toddlers or preschool-age kids. We don't actually have a lot of playgrounds throughout our system that are specifically targeted to that age group. This is kind of a unique site because being right next to Grantwood Elementary, that playground is very large and very expansive and quite, quite fun, but it doesn't have any of the smaller preschool-type areas, so we're gonna add that, do that part in the park, along with replacing the shelter at this site. Once again, not doing anything with the splash pad there, just the shelter and the This picture shows exactly why we need to replace this playground. This is the Napoleon Playground, it's the playground in the middle of the softball complex. If you played softball down there last summer, you know it was closed a majority of the time because of such drainage issues and issues with the subsoil underneath it. This will replace it and address those drainage issues, as well as providing a better access path to the playground area. Okay, and then the, the projects are in 2023. Tarrel Mill Skate Park redesign, this is, this is several years out, but it's, it's a park feature that hasn't been touched since it was installed several years ago. So this would, we do get requests almost every year, as the new students move in, can they have, you know, they want bigger, better, different ramps and different features in the skate park. This will give us a chance to look at that and see what might be possible. It is used, it's- us a chance to look at that and see what might be possible. It is used. It's not an area that we often think about too much in our park system, but it is used. There's a project listed for the Mercer Ballpark, Diamond Number Four, and this includes artificial turf. This would need to be in partnership with the school district, and at this time, they haven't, they haven't committed funding to it. But we do have it sitting out there as a 2023 project, so that if that happens, we can partner with them on that. Okay, and then renovations of Hunter Run Park on the very west side of town, playground shelter, similar to what we're doing in the other park renovations. I see one project that I didn't mention that would be coming up in the next year. This is at the Recreation Center Mercer Park. We just did the HVAC repairs or replacement this past year. This takes it to the next step. So if you've been in the entryway in the lobby area, Mercer, it's always very humid in there. And although sometimes that's nice on a cold winter day, what it's doing is eating away at the building, the envelope of the building. So we want to add a dehumidification system to the building, and then we'll redo the tuck pointing and some roof repairs that are being caused because of all the excess moisture there. All right, so I didn't quite hear all the projects, but I'd be happy to answer questions you might have on other ones.
I'd just like to mention, a couple of years ago, I did a mayor's walk out in the general vicinity of Hunter's Run Park, and every time I'd knock on a door and talk with somebody, I'd ask them if they used the park, do they like it, and that kind of thing. And the answer was, yes, I love it. Absolutely, I love it. So I'm really happy to see more work being done on it, making it an even better part of that neighborhood. And of course, that's the basic principle behind all the work we're doing with regard to neighborhood parks, really enhancing the quality of neighborhoods by improving the quality of the neighborhood parks.
For the west side, I used to live in the west side, and my kids go all the time to Willow Creek Park. But I was all the time thinking about another park where, like the be close by City High, by West High, I mean, where like the neighbor of Fazerrich People and as a neighbor they can, like, do something. I'm just wondering, is the land in front of West High, is that belong to the school or the city?
It's the school.
Really?
Yeah, that is kind of a difficult area for us. Couple of things that are happening there, though, is the Walden Green area is going to have community gardens placed there. So that is one small green space that we own, kind of in that neighborhood. I know that the Christ the King Church on the corner Mormon Trek in Melrose, they have their own little park that serves a community over there, and although it doesn't count as one of our city parks, I know that that does serve similar purpose. There really isn't any other land for us to, that we found to develop in that area.
Well, really, because I really see a lot of kids in the neighborhood, like by the neighborhood center and Fazerrich, there is many, many kids over there. And the park at Fazerrich is not enough for them. I've been seeing like kids fight over the playground and, yeah. But I thought maybe we owned the land in front of City High, West High, I mean, we can do something there, but still. Okay.
Maybe we could do a little tactical urbanism, John, and just go out there and take possession of this land in front of West High.
Yes.
I have advocated for joint use agreements, and I still advocate, would advocate for that between the school district and the city of Iowa City. There are parts of town where, as Julie just said, there isn't land. Twain is another neighborhood, which, other than Highland, there is no neighborhood park in Lucas Farms or Twain neighborhood. So I'm, I would support that, you know, if, because in some cases, there really isn't any other option. And I would further say that my observation would be that the school district tends to focus more on the built facility, not so much on the outdoors. So I think we could help kind of fulfill the full potential of these sites if we were to address the outdoor spaces.
Ah, we're going to save them the morning class area, biggest space, and no one uses it, yeah. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Next.
All right, so we'll move on to Public Works, and this will cover all the different divisions within Public Works, starting off with the, out at the landfill. The equipment building, this is a building that's in poor condition, currently isn't able to house all the equipment indoors, so this would look to replace that and really not only update it, but again, allow for storage of equipment indoors. The compost pad improvements, this is a location where there's been settlement and damage to the existing pad. Again, just being on a landfill site, a lot of that settlement, this would look to address that and provide a new compost pad. South Side Recycling Site, so this will look to install a new location for recycling facilities on the south side. We're looking at potentially a couple of different sites here, one being kind of the southeast quadrant of the McColister Old Highway 218 intersection, also looking up there at the boat launch, kind of on the north end there, in that area as well as a potential location. So I don't know that a final decision's been made, but we'd look at probably one of those two locations for a new site. The landfill do extraction system, so I had mentioned a similar product earlier, the one that we just completed. This will look to expand on that. I think, depending on pricing, we're probably looking at in the neighborhood about eight or nine wells additional that would be completed with this project. The Lower Muscatine Area Storm Sewer Improvements, what this will do is look to build off of the Lower Muscatine reconstruction product that was done a few years ago. We'll look to extend some of the storm sewer that was done with that project into the surrounding neighborhood. There's really little to no storm sewer in that neighborhood, and so this will look to help collect that water before it all gets down to Lower Muscatine. Sycamore is another location that would be included with this project, for those who are familiar with that area. There's a lot of water that comes down to Forest and then Sycamore as well. North Westminster Area, this is an area where, a couple of years ago, we had done a study to look at localized flooding in this area. What this project would do would be to implement some of the recommendations and recommended improvements that were done with that study. West River Bank Stabilization, this is one that you've seen recently. We recently rejected the first round of bids for this one. So this will install a retaining wall and riprap and other kind of stabilization measures along the west side of the river, just north of Highway Six, and we'll also set it up for a future trail project. Equipment Shop Parking Lot Overlay, this is one that's been in there previously, and we'll really just look to overlay the existing parking lot. Again, this is one that's really showing its age and up for the wear and tear. So a new parking lot overlay for that one. Salt Stand, salt and sand storage bunkers, this would be out at the new Public Works site. This is an item that was included originally in the project and then was cut as we were trying to bring that project within budget. Really what this would do is provide some cover storage for salt and sand, could also be used for topsoil and other materials that are used for kind of daily operations for, for streets and other divisions. Brine Maker and Blending Station, this would help to allow the city to use brine. A lot of times, this is used for pretreating of roadways for, for winter maintenance, and so this would be adding that capability. American Legion Road, this will look to reconstruct American Legion Road from Scott Boulevard to Taft Avenue. It will include a roundabout at the Scott and American Legion Road intersection. It will reconstruct this section of street as a two-lane section, but it will go from a rural cross-section to an urban cross-section, so we would add curb and gutter, storm sewer. Also, we'll look at adding a wide sidewalk on the north side as well as a standard sidewalk on the south side. Also includes the pedestrian underpass near the Barrington Road intersection. The McColister Boulevard Extension, this will extend McColister Boulevard from where it currently ends, just east of Gilbert Street. This will extend it to the northern roundabout on Sycamore. Will also include some utility work as well as that, and then also looking to include the signalization of the McColister-Gilbert Street intersection. Apprentice Street Bridge Replacement, you can see here, it currently is triple corrugated metal culverts that are in extremely poor condition. We have ongoing issues with settlement and voiding occurring under the pavement, so looking at replacing that with a new structure, looking at working through design of that right now. The next two projects kind of go together, the first one being the Melrose Avenue Improvements, also IWV. So this will be a joint project with the county that will reconstruct the two-lane section that is there now. It will actually stay a rural section, but we're looking at adding wide shoulders to help for kind of bicycle facilities out into the county. It will reconstruct it from where the county had recently done a project at Hebel, near the landfill entrance, and extend that to basically just west of Highway 218. And then with that, we will also look to extend water main to the landfill. Buke Street Reconstruction, this is a project, I would say, similar to what was done in Washington Street. It'll be for a block of Dubuque Street, basically between Washington and Iowa Avenue. So again, street reconstruction as well as utility work and streetscape improvements for this, this section. Kirkwood Avenue and Capitol Street Extensions, so this will be the Riverfront Crossings area. It extends Kirkwood Avenue approximately a block, as well as Capitol, approximately a block, and then they'll have some sort of intersection. This will be there right by the Riverfront Crossings Park and will help to accommodate some of the anticipated redevelopment in this area. With that, that will also, was going to mention, that it'll also include removal of the existing railroad spur that is, that crosses Benton Street, that is no longer used. First Avenue and Scott Boulevard, looking at installing a roundabout in this location. It's currently a four-way stop. We pretty rarely get complaints about this area for, from a queuing and delay standpoint, so looking at this project to help address those issues. Court Street Reconstruction, this will look to reconstruct Court from Muscatine to First Avenue. So this would be not only street paving, it would be new sidewalk, utility work, all of that in the stretch.
Would it widen the Court Street?
I don't know that we've looked at, have a final answer to that. I don't think that we would look to necessarily widen it, but we would evaluate that with part of the design.
Okay.
Benton Street Rehabilitation, so this would look at some concrete patching as well as an asphalt overlay, basically from Mormon Trek down to just short of Greenwood. Some of you may remember, a couple of years ago, we actually did the hill on Benton Street, overlaid that, so we would kind of fill in that section. Also would focus on ADA improvements, so new curb ramps with that as well. And then also, I wanted to mention, currently out there, there's a shoulder that is striped. It's not technically a bike lane. This would actually widen that to allow for an official bike lane to be included on Benton Street as well.
Would that be buffered?
I don't think we'd be able to fit buffered in there because we wouldn't be changing the curb lines, but it will be the proper width for a bike lane. Second Avenue Bridge Replacement, this is essentially replacing the structure that's there. Also would look for some street paving to tie that back in. One of the, a couple of the other improvements that would be done with this project is to provide a sidewalk crossing here as well, and then tie into some of the sidewalk that's in the neighborhood, existing, as well as a water main connection under the creek in this location. Rochester Avenue, so this would be a reconstruction from essentially Ralston Creek to First Avenue. A few years ago, we had reconstructed the bridge over Ralston Creek, so we would take off from that project and then to the east to First Avenue. Again, complete reconstruction, street, sidewalk, utilities with that one as well. Highway One, Highway Six Intersection, this is a study to look at the intersection. This is one that we've been looking at for a little while. It's certainly not ideal with a skewed intersection, really no pedestrian accommodation, so this is a kind of a study to look at what we might want for a long-term solution. And then, once we have that study, we could look at a future project to, to construct those improvements. Dodge Street Reconstruction, so this is one that was mentioned earlier. We're actually working on the functional design for this right now to figure out what the overall design might look like, but this would be for actual construction of that section. With this being a highway route, this would be one that we would share with the DOT, so there would be some cost sharing there as well. But it would be complete reconstruction, again, street, sidewalk, utilities, all of that included in the project. Market Street and Jefferson Street Two-Way Conversion, this is one, again, that has been mentioned previously. We'd be looking at going from one-way to two-way. With that, we'd have to do some signal improvements and some other improvements that may be needed. Obviously, restriping. Would also be looking at the addition of bicycle facilities in this location. I believe the Bicycle Master Plan calls out buffered bike lanes. I think it's going to depend on what we have for street width there. Right now, it's, with it being one-way, you have essentially a bike lane in one direction on each one. So whether or not we can fit them on both directions, I think that's yet to be seen, but we would fit in what, what we're able to.
I'm assuming there are conversations about why the change from a one-way to a two-way?
Mm-hmm.
Can you give me a brief?
I think in general, there's been a movement away from one-way streets. I think they, in the past, were viewed as a way to move traffic through town. I think, you know, when you start talking about neighborhoods and that kind of stuff, they've been viewed as not as conducive to that. And so I think that's kind of the general thought, is that it would have a more neighborhood feel and a better fit within an urban environment when it's two-way traffic.
Bruce, also, by taming traffic speeds on roads like those two, you have an opportunity to increase the economic value of businesses along those streets. If they're treated, I'm going to use the word sewers, if they're treated like sewers through which vehicles run, I don't mean to have too much of an analogy there, then that has the tendency to decrease the value of property because all people are trying to do is get through very quickly, instead of treating it as a place where people can walk, people can sit outdoors, and local businesses can thrive.
I think when we get to that point, there will be a lot of discussion because I think this is, I think this is probably a very controversial issue within the community. I don't think it's, I don't think you're going to see 100% the people that say this change is good, so I think there'll be a lot of public discussion.
Yeah, absolutely, that's true.
Bruce, I see some Jeff Speck videos in your future. He was the urban planner that came two or three years ago, and he's written a lot about Walkable City. And he's at least persuaded some of us that it does really give a more neighborhood feel. The safety improvements are dramatic, the safe, the reduction in speed is significant, which of course does mean some delay in going across town. It's relatively marginal, but I think that's where some of the controversy comes. And we've seen that, I think, on Mormon Trek. Oh, that's not necessarily a conversion, it's narrowing the street. It's not necessarily narrowing here, but I think the reduction in speed, I think, causes some of the controversy. But I'll send you some Jeff Speck videos for, for your watching.
On that point, Bruce, I think what Brockney's really saying is that he's going to give you a gift, which is a most, a recent, a copy of the most recent book that Jeff Speck has written. It's called The Walkable City, but it's an update of that book, and it's probably would be very enlightening for you to read. And then you form your own judgment about what you think, but it'd be really helpful to read. Jason, I want to ask you a question. Could you go back to Highway Six and Highway One? Because my question really...
I do have one last question on that.
Sure.
Would there only be parking on one side of the street?
I don't know that that's been decided at this point. I think we kind of look at various options.
All right, thanks.
So I want to make a point about this intersection. Right now, it's an intersection of flows. It's just traffic. What I think we have an opportunity to do is to treat it as a place, and to try to make it into a place that in itself has appeal, instead of just being a place through which traffic moves. It's a big opportunity. I wish we would really think about it seriously. would really think about it seriously, and it's, so to do that, you can't think only in terms of moving traffic. You have to think about urban design, you have to think about all the other aspects associated with that. So Jeff Speck and others have a lot of advice about that, but I hopeful, I'm hoping that, ahead, looking ahead, when staff gets to this particular topic in a very serious way, that you will take into account, and the council will take into account, the idea of placemaking there, instead of just facilitating flow.
I guess I don't understand what that exactly means, but maybe reading the book kind of helped me, because it seemed like we would do some type of a structure to make that corner look good, and for me, that would be destructive, you know, in my mind right now, from what I'm hearing, but I'll read the book, and maybe you can talk to me about this later.
Yeah, good.
I have suggested before, I can't remember the contexts, but we are talking budget, of having a small library available to council and staff of books like Jeff Speck's new book, that could be loaned out to yourself, or anyone who is interested in whatever the topics that would be covered by the books in there.
Nice. I think we've talked about the pedestrian lack of friendliness along Highway 1, Highway 6 quite a bit, and there had been some talk at times of along that stretch somewhere having more of a pedestrian overpass kind of thing, that would make it easier for pedestrians, because you do see people, and bikers too, trying to cross there, not necessarily at that Highway 1-6 intersection, but we do see a few, and now there's a Starbucks going in there, and there's going to be more people, and then new where Joanne's was and where Paul's was, there's going to be probably some more pedestrian traffic, so I think maybe we can keep that in mind as part of that, too, as some kind of overpass for the pedestrians.
If you're on a bike or on foot, that intersection is insane. It's just, it's totally unsafe to try to cross it on bike or on foot.
Moving down to wastewater, the clarifier repairs, this is really repairs of original equipment to the plant. We've actually replaced a couple of them, so this would replace two more of those clarifiers. The Scott Boulevard trunk sewer, this is out on the east side of town, just north of the railroad tracks, east of Scott Boulevard. It would look at extending the sanitary sewer that's there, existing, extending it to kind of the northeast, up to American Legion Road. There's actually a lift station on the north side of American Legion Road in that location. That would go away as part of this project, and allow it to be fed gravity sewer, instead of having that pump station. Obviously, with the new school out there, there's likely to be significant interest in development of this area, and that, this project would help with that as well.
I was just going to make a point about that. Looking at the photograph on the left shows the new school on the upper right, right, the new Hoover School. So, you know, we've just commissioned Opticos to do a form-based code for the area around Alexander Elementary, and when we first started thinking about that, our idea was to use the information they come up with, and the code they come up with, for application in this area, that, like Jason just said, is going to be developed once there's a sewer line and so on, in the general vicinity, or serving the area. Yeah, so you've got to see these things as part of a whole.
Nevada Avenue Sanitary Sewer, this one should be, knock on wood, hopefully pretty straightforward, just replacing an existing sanitary sewer that's in poor condition. West Park Lift Station, this will be a replacement and upgrading, updating of the existing lift station that is located in City Park. Digestor Cover Renovation, this is replacement of a couple of the covers of a couple of the digestors down at the wastewater plant, again, just in poor condition, at the end of their useful life.
The digester complex, so this is a project that's driven by some of the nutrient removal that's being done through the sludge process, mainly phosphorus, it's creating a byproduct called Struvite, which is plugging up all the piping. This will also, so this project will look at the process to remove that Struvite. We'll also be looking at the potential, as we look at the methane gas production and ways of reuse, of potentially incorporating that into this project also.
I certainly know what a digester is, but just for the public, could you explain what is a digester?
So the digester, so the byproduct that's created during the treatment process is sludge, and so in these digestors, that sludge is broken down, so that there's no more potential for ill-health results of that. That product, that breaks down into what we call bio-solids, and that's actually land applied, through some farm fields on the southern side of Iowa City.
Terrific.
The Influent rake and screen replacement, so this is kind of the first line of defense for the wastewater plant. Again, it's reached the end of its useful life, and more or less replacement of what's there. The Hawkeye Lift Station Rehabilitation Project, similar to the previous one, this is one that will be replaced or updated with a new lift station in this location. The rare South Sewer, so this is near, or will cross Mormon Trek, will also extend sewer along Abbey Lane, across Highway 218. The significant, or the significance of this project really is that this is one of the main hurdles for development west of Highway 218, so this has kind of been that sticking point of, once the sanitary sewer crosses the highway here, then that would potentially open up development of the Carson Farm area on the west side of 218.
Is that, would that be gravity-fed?
Yes.
And it's within the, the development area, the planned development area of the...
It's been part of the long-term plan of the sewer system.
Right now, we're kind of reaching capacity on our west side in terms of buildable lots. The Country Club Estates subdivision is going through their last phase. Camp Cardinal's starting to fill out. After those two areas build out more, we really don't have much growth on the west side, so that project's out a few years, I think it was in the fourth or fifth year of our CIP, but it really looks at that next growth opportunity on our west side, and with that comes a lot of discussions about other needs. So are there school sites needed? Are we looking at a west-side recreation center? There's a large stormwater detention basin that's needed for that side. Whole number of things will require a lot of master planning, but this is at least identifying the dollars to get that sewer underneath 18.
Yeah, there's no neighborhood commercial area out there. The nearest one is where the Fairview grocery store is. Yeah, there's a lot of work that has to be done on that. And again, this form-based code that we're developing for Opticos, or with Opticos' help, could be very beneficial for that area.
First Avenue Water Main Replacement, really just water main replacement of these two blocks just south of Court Street. Spruce Street Water Main, again, replacement of a couple of blocks of water main that has a history of breaks.
So as nutrient, and nutrient-loading nitrogen starts becoming an issue for us in the Iowa River, which then, you know, Iowa River basically is our source water, whether it's through direct removal or through our collector wells that we use. What we're seeing is, as nitrogen levels increase in the river, they're not returning back to the lower levels that they were, and so this project will be investigating what we can do to deal with the nitrogen removal, or other ways to offset the nitrogen in our source water.
Dill Street Water Main Replacement, this is, again, is a water main replacement project, but along with that, we'll look at installing sidewalk on one side of Dill Street. This is an area that currently doesn't have sidewalk. If you're familiar with the area, it will be challenging to add sidewalk in this location, so I think that's why we're focused on one side of the street, again, just to try and provide that pedestrian connection from Rocky Shore to the adjacent neighborhood. Bradford Drive Water Main Replacement, this will be replacement of water main just north of Southeast Junior High.
The water distribution pressure zone improvements, we worked on a study with HGR to look at pressure zoning of our system. With this study, they've identified basically two pressure zones for us. One would be kind of the northeast part of our community, and then the remainder of the community would be, would be in a different pressure zone. The reasoning for this is, as we look at the east side of, the northeast side of our community, because of the elevation being about the same as the elevation of our water plant, we have issues with being able to keep the pressures up to service these areas. So with this project, they've identified where we need to add pieces of infrastructure to separate the pressure zones. This helps fund those pieces, but we're also using other projects, American Legion Road, the First Avenue Water Main Project, to also implement the features into the system that we need to create that pressure zone.
The Jordan Well Rehabilitation Project will basically make improvements to the, it's showing in the blue there, up at the water plant, the Jordan Well. Forest Avenue Water Replacement, again, replacement of a block of water main. Collector Well Capacity Improvement, so this will focus on Collector Well 1, will replace the Collector Well, also look at ways to improve the capacity of the Collector Well. Highway 1 Water Main Replacement will include, or reconstruction of a stretch of water main there, kind of across the street from Walmart.
Jason, I want to toss you a softball. So why do we need to replace water mains?
A lot of times, it's in areas where we have a history of water main breaks, so it gets to, sometimes it's due to age, sometimes it's just due to, we have certain eras where construction methods of the time resulted in sections of pipe that just result in more maintenance. Oftentimes, that's water main breaks.
Okay.
So that kind of answers my question. I think we've talked about that before. You don't necessarily wait until there's an issue, that the water main's broken, just kind of the history of it, and maybe if you know the date of when it was actually installed, you're thinking it's outliving.
Yep, and a lot of times, it's, yeah, we get a pretty good idea, we start seeing patterns of certain era of pipe, or type of pipe that's being used, where if we see a history of breaks, then we'll be more proactive with replacement of those areas.
And are you routinely looking at this, I'm assuming, for areas to replace it?
Correct, yep. It's an ongoing process. The high-service pump VFD replacement, this replaces the variable frequency drives on the high-service pumps, and just really makes them more efficient during pumping operations. The Peninsula Well Field Power Redundancy, so now that the Peninsula neighborhood has been built out, this allows for basically an additional power feed to this area that will allow for essentially a loop system, so should something happen, it will allow for some redundancy there.
Excuse me, Jeff has, am I right in thinking that Peninsula is now fully built out, or is there like one lot left or something?
It's pretty darn close, if it's not full.
I was wondering if they're going to have a celebration about, you know, completing the project. If there is, I'd like to go.
I have not heard anything, but I'll let you know.
I once assigned students to go out there when it was still the remnants of a farm, and they did things like collected bedrock, soil samples, water samples, walked all over the place. I camped out there, well, sort of camped out there one night in the middle of winter. It was really great fun. That was before the Peninsula had developed, it was built, of course.
The chlorine feeder system, so this will be an upgrade to the water plant, and really replacing the existing system. With that, that's it for Public Works, so we'll move on to Airport.
I did have one question. So the First Avenue and Scott Boulevard, they're getting the roundabout?
Yep.
As well as American Legion Road and Scott Boulevard, they're both getting a roundabout. So with, like, Scott, American Legion Road and Scott Boulevard, seem like there's, the school is there, and there's neighborhoods there, and I know I've been on the First Avenue, you know, trying to get through there at like, high-volume times, and it seems challenging to get through there. Has there been studies done about roundabout, I'm assuming there, I mean, you've done roundabout studies versus lights. Do you find that that's going to really move traffic at a nice pace, or would lights be more advantageous?
I think what you're going to find, certainly there's been some analysis that's been completed. I think what you're going to find is that during those peak times, there's still going to be some delay and some queuing that occurs, where you really see the benefit is those off-peak times, so I think it'll still move traffic during those peak times, but really during the off-peak times, you'll be able to have essentially free flow, whereas for signals, you're still going to have times where even if there's not other people there, you're having to stop to wait for the light to change, or whatever, so I think overall, it's going to be an improvement, but certainly it's not going to be a situation where there's no queuing or delay.
I think maybe more, if we see more and more in our community, because they're really new, and people are just stalled, they don't know what to do, myself included, and so I think right now, even when they're in use from people within our community, they may not be going at the pace that they could be going, because people, you know, they don't quite know who has the right of way to go, and all that other stuff, but I just wondered about that, because those, you know, those high-use times can be a little frustrating, but I do get the point of, you know, the benefits when it's not that peak time.
Jason, isn't there also substantial environmental benefit from the roundabout, that you're not having as much acceleration when you're moving?
Sure, and whether it's queuing or whatever, emissions are certainly cut down when you're not having people just sitting at intersections. But I think, to that point, there's certainly an education component that goes with that, and I think as you do get more, people become more familiar with them, and they become more popular.
I think there's two things with those, to Bruce's point. One, that the roundabout itself is physically large enough, so you've got that radius, that there's actually some space. We've talked about, one, in the area that's really small, not in Iowa City, and two, I've seen them in other cities where they actually put up signs that simply say, "Yield to the Left," and so people gradually get the idea of, okay, I don't need to look at the right, I just need to see what's coming from my left, and yield to any cars coming around, so I think that could be helpful as well.
And both of these are intended to be full-size roundabouts, not minis or other designs?
Traffic circles.
I have to say, the first time I ever saw a roundabout was in Hilton Head, and I was scared to death, because they were going really fast.
Well, having had drivers add many, many, many years ago, prior to roundabouts, I think there are a lot of us in that age range that don't know for sure, and I have seen the signs that say, "Yield to the Left," and I think that would be extremely helpful.
All right, everybody, let's remember, we're leaving at 3:45.
That's right, that's right.
Yeah, we're just fine. Well, good afternoon, I'm Mike Tharp, I'm the Airport Operations Specialist. As Dennis alluded to earlier, when he was giving the overview of the presentation with airport projects, our funding sources are basically three areas. We get $100,000 from the General Levy, which we use for matching grants. Those grants come from either the state DOT or the Federal Aviation Administration, and when the FAA, the Federal Aviation Administration participates, we get, they give us 90% of the project cost. When the state participates at the DOT level, it's anywhere from 70% to 85% of the project cost, depending on the particular grant and the particular project. Because of that, when we don't get funded via grants, those projects usually just shift down the line, and that's what you've probably seen a great deal of, or moved around somewhat in that project matrix, where the, you can see that changes over the last few years. With the projects that we've got on the list, the first one, the airport parking lot expansion, this is one just to try to increase the availability of parking spaces at the terminal building. When we have days where we have heavy charter use, or even when we're trying to host, you know, community meetings, community events, parking is at a premium, so we're trying to do a couple of projects there to just increase the availability of parking spaces close to the building. The airfield pavement rehab, this is actually our last section of 1950s era pavement, you know, it's pavement that's in not great condition, it's definitely watermark, or weather marked, and does have some cracking, and... marked and does have some cracking and then we're seeing some joint unraveling with it. So we're going to take that out and replace it. Project number three and four, both of these kind of tie together. This is coming from the airport's master plan and this one is to add about 210, 215 feet to the end of runway seven. What that pavement does is if you're landing on the opposite direction, you actually get a full 5,000 foot of landing distance that you can use for aircraft landing calculations. Runway 25, this is one that's coming from our, again, from our airport master plan and is part of the broader obstruction mitigation projects, but because we've changed some design criteria based on the airport's usage over the last 20 years, we're able to shift the landing threshold back about 700 feet and reclaim some of that existing pavement for landing calculations. The runway 12303, again, coming from the master plan, this is a project that ties into some of our obstruction mitigation. We are displacing the threshold on the northwest side of the airport about 500 feet in order to kind of maintain the same landing distance that's on that runway. We're going to add pavement to the opposite end to keep those calculations going. Self-serve fuel kiosk, this is one that we went after state grants last year and unfortunately weren't funded, but we may try again. The fuel system kiosk right now just needs to be updated so it can better handle the chips and the cards and that kind of source. Right now it's just a magnetic feed point-of-sale system. And our apron expansion, this is our larger expansion. You can see in the picture the two colors of the pavement. That smaller section was added last year in preparation for this, for the rehab project. But this one is a much larger one so that we can better accommodate especially the larger aircraft that come in. If we get a kind of the max end of our ability to handle aircraft, it can take up anywhere from a third to a quarter of our ramp. So it really cuts down on the available parking for other aircraft that might show up. And that's the airport projects.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, John Greer, Fire Chief. Mine are pretty straightforward for stuff. Our apparatus replacement program, we've, you'll notice in your document that you have, we did switch some things around. So for 20 we have coming up, the replacement of an engine and our safety house. And then in 22, that would be a replacement of our Quint, which is a latter-type device. And then in 23 would be our actual aerial device for 1.9 million. And then the other one I have on there is Fire Station 5, that lot purchase we just did not too long ago. So I'd entertain any questions you might have.
One super quick question. One of the things that pops up in urban planning questions a lot are the size of fire trucks themselves. And for the Peninsula, do we have smaller trucks for that area? Is that something we look at in terms of possibly looking at smaller trucks? Because when you talk about street width, that usually comes up as an issue in terms of the size of fire trucks and obviously you have reasonable concerns, we all want to make sure we can access it. Is that something that comes up or you think about?
It has come up more in the recent past, yes. It's on our radar for this next round of purchases as far as the engines. Seems the bigger your engine gets, the more you put on it and I think some of it we could probably not carry and we're cognizant of the shrinking street.
Yep.
We are able to access all the streets, sometimes it just takes a little maneuvering.
Because you guys always get a hard time a lot about the fire chief expressing concern, so I just thought I'd bring that up.
Yes.
You do a great job.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief, that was easy.
Thanks.
Good afternoon, Elder Ruth Carmen, Library Director. We're going to keep this short and sweet as well. We've got two projects to talk about. The first is the first half of a carpeting and furnishing upgrade at the library. This will be on the second floor. Just for context, the carpet and furnishing is original to the 2004 building. I think it's a testament to our building maintenance crews that it's in the shape it's in. So mostly wear and tear, but also interestingly, we know much more about how furnishings affect access now and the pattern that we chose, that was chosen in 2004 actually could be a barrier for some folks coming in the building because it has a sort of a 3D pattern. So we'll know better for selecting this next time. And the second one is continuation of the HVAC repairs. This is just expected and general operational maintenance.
Any questions? Any questions for Howard?
Pretty easy.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Why don't you skip through Senior Center and go to the next one?
She's sitting there.
She's out here.
She has a citizen.
Oh, there she is.
Hi, Gotashia.
Hi, my apologies. I'll be here for 90 seconds. So the Senior Center for this fiscal year, we have a plaster issue. If you've been to our grand staircase, you know we have some plaster coming down that we need to get that repaired as well as there's a window with some water retention happening in there. And then also to specifically look at doing some type of ADA study to make sure our building is really being able to do what it is that we need to specifically for our population, but the community in general. So those are our two asks that we have for amendment for this year. Do we hit 2022? Okay. For the next year, we're looking at, we have some of the oldest carpet in probably the city. Some of our carpet is over 40 years old. And so just thinking about health issues that can happen, especially as people have lung issues, et cetera. I mean, our staff does an amazing job of trying to maintain and keep it clean, but I just know even in my office is about 40 years old carpeting. So we have some requests for carpets and we need to start looking at some kitchen redesign. I know you all know we have a kind of defunct kitchen, but there's some ideas of how do we make that kitchen more accessible as a rentable space for small businesses or as a catering kitchen, a space where a public can use it. So there's some thought about getting someone to come in, some contractors and some design happening to look at it so that we can come up with a good plan about how we can better utilize city facility as well as is that a revenue opportunity for the Senior Center? Is that an opportunity to build some intergenerational programming, et cetera, that we kind of have in mind to utilize in that space? And then there's some other building repairs, some wallpaper, painting, different things that we're looking at in 2020. We have four floors, so there's, a lot of this is mostly just building, removal of some paint. And then our hope is to eventually, as time goes on, to start looking at some of the exterior of our building, trying to kind of reflect the vibrancy of what's happening inside the building, on the outside of the building, a little bit more with potentially putting in some, I'm losing the word, but to do some more with our landscaping so that people can understand a little bit more, maybe being more clear about what the center is. So there's a little bit of outside work, but that's further down as we're looking into it. Those are mostly our main, our main goals is to get the building updated. Just because it's an older building, it doesn't have to go without the repair that's needed. And I don't think we've asked for CIP requests, I don't think, in a really, really long time, at least looking back at our files. So this is kind of our first time really saying we really need to make some changes and to do some things. Eventually at some point, I think we're also going to have to look at replacing our elevator because it's been there for a really, really long time as well. So some, a lot of these things about safety, some of them are definitely looking at, you know, improving the look, updating the look, but some of them are in regards to safety.
Can I just comment on the kitchen? I was so glad to hear you say that because that's going to be huge.
Yeah.
I think that's going to be a really exciting project. I know Muzahir and I have talked a lot about possible Robert A. Lee. There are some complexities with making that happen at Robert A. Lee, but in terms of the food entrepreneurs, community programming, I think in the location, I'm so excited that you guys are proposing that. So I'm really excited to see what you have in store for that particular project.
Yeah, we, I'm really excited about it that it could potentially, my goal is it would be really great to do a cooking show. Like what does that look like to know how to make?
YouTube?
Yes, we already got YouTube. We have Senior Center TV, so we already have the staff that's available to do that, but to partner with local chefs or folks that want to come in and show how to make some meals and kind of combine that with our pantry that we've opening. How does it, to make a low-budget meal to kind of stretch your dollars. So just some ideas there about like how we can incorporate the use of that kitchen as well as potentially some, some small entrepreneurs who need a space later in the evening and afternoon when we're not utilizing it. So those are just some ideas on the table. Obviously there's, we're open to other ideas and suggestions about what that looks like, but getting someone to come in specifically to kind of give us an idea of how we can do that will be really helpful.
Do you all currently use the commercial kitchen?
So.
Not today, no.
Not really. So we have the space, we have these refrigerators and things, but they're not up to date, they're not in use. So right now, the only use of the kitchen is our sanitation space, which is still functioning and fine. And then we have a refrigerator, but that's with our collaboration with elder services to specifically still provide our meals at the noon hour. So they have a refrigerator that's in there. So some of that stuff in there is theirs as well because it kind of got left over from when that contract kind of changed. So we'll be working with them also about what to do with those items as well as how we can update that space to actually get a functioning stove and refrigerator, et cetera. I think it'd also be a great space as we look to potentially in the future partnering with public health if there's ever a disaster, that we can have a place specifically for elders in our community to go to get medication, et cetera. So that's also a part of hoping to put that in a plan about how do we become a point-of-distribution site down the line that we can help if there's ever a disaster. So we'll need a functioning area for refrigeration, but that's some conversation.
The reason I, the reason I ask is because it sounded like you were planning if there was going to be use for the community to come in, it would be after hours when the senior, when the, when the center is using it. And so currently there is a agency in town that allow entrepreneurs to go in, but the challenge that I've been told is that they have to go in super early or after like 5 o'clock. And so most catering businesses, they need to be typically during the day, you know? And so that was one of the challenges. So just keep, I wanted to just mention that.
Okay.
Because that is something that's been told to me by a few people that want, that do have a catering business and they have a challenge in finding.
Time.
A usable commercial space.
Okay. I mean, it's definitely something we can look at. Right now, it's, it's mostly being used to just be able to serve food out of during that noon hour. So it's not being utilized in the morning, it's not being utilized in the afternoon. So I think there, there could be some possibilities. Obviously I need to find more details. I'm not trying to sell y'all something that I don't know about.
Sure.
So I'm just saying that, you know, we're open to whatever we can do to make that space available because it is quite a bit of square footage that we could be utilizing.
Well, the one good thing is that there's somebody already doing it, so that would be a connection for you.
Yes, great. Please let me know.
And I'm assuming it will be a live-in kitchen, right?
Well, yeah, well, yeah, we would have to just, just in general, if we're going to do that.
Yeah, if we're going to allow somebody else to come and cook and sell their food. So it'd have to be a live-in kitchen.
Yeah. So there's some work and some challenges of getting that up to date.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you, Gotashia. Well, Chief Mathew is coming up. Gotashia's comment about a plaster repair reminds me that of a job apprentice opportunity. There are lots of older buildings in Iowa City that need plaster repair on the interior and there's only one person who does plaster repair in Iowa City. And that one person is something like 80 years old. So it would be great if as an economic development kind of activity, we would reach out to that one individual and try to find some way to get an apprentice or more than one apprentice to work with him. Okay, Chief. Hi.
Hi, good afternoon. Jody Mathew, Police Chief. We have three projects that we're looking at. We've spent a lot of time looking at the physical structure of our building, the efficiency of the building and then technology related to that. Some of the things we found are that we need to improve on a more visitor-friendly design that incorporates safety as a priority. We have no interview rooms. Folks that come in to talk to us, make a complaint have to sit in an officer report area near the break room. And so there's just no privacy and safety there for anybody. The interior space for training and meeting rooms, we've evaluated. The areas for appropriate and secure prisoner movement, fingerprinting in detention are substandard. Lack of storage and records space, we have two off-site storage areas, as you well know, that we deal with for evidence and things of that nature. And then just room for staff expansion. Much of this is not going to be addressed through some of the remodeling that we're talking about now. It'll take a new facility for that, but we know that's way down the road. But we're able to do some of these things at a relatively inexpensive cost right now and still enhance safety and efficiency and make it more accommodating for our customers, those who come in and talk to us. So that's the first project here. These are all 2019 projects, by the way, but there's three offices as you walk in, our front entrance, the watch commander's office where the supervisors sit for patrol, and then two officer report writing rooms, which is really where we talk to our community members that come in. So we're going to remodel the three of those to make them into two interview rooms that will have some privacy and the technology that's related to taking proper complaints and reports. And then update the watch commander's office and also the officers' report writing room. There'll be some funding from another source through our abandoned money funds that was targeted several years ago for building improvements. And so we'll use some of that money with this project as well. The next thing is the body camera replacement. So we, we use a system now that's antiquated, it's eight years old, it's no longer supported by the manufacturer, so it's time to replace the in-car camera systems. Our body cameras are just three or four years old, but those really take a beating. They have new systems now where the body camera talks to the car camera. So if I activate the body camera, the car camera turns on and vice versa. So there's less chance of saying I had to jump out of my police car, chase after a person and I didn't have a chance to activate this. If I activate one, it'll activate the other. There's also systems out there that are recording in the background. So if I do not have a chance to activate my body camera or the car camera, these systems are still recording and we can go back and download off the hard drive and still get that information if we need it. So it kind of takes the, takes the, the, the chance that we have unrecorded incidents happening, which really enhances things for us and it also makes things more transparent for our community. So those are the new systems we're looking at for this project. And then the last one is crime scene mapping. We have what's called, it's a total station. So it's really designed initially for engineers and things of that nature for road construction projects. It's worked well for evidence scenes, but it's, it's labor-intensive, it takes a lot of manpower and also just takes a lot of time. The new systems, it's almost a one-to-two-person show and literally will do within minutes what has taken us hours with the old system. And these systems are designed to measure crime scenes to scale and be able to reproduce it in the courtroom and use it for investigations. So we're really looking forward to that. Half of this project is also going to be funded by the University of Iowa Police Department who's budgeted and then we'll have an MOU to share this device. So it's not just sitting idle, the two agencies are using it in a shared concept, so it'll save us some money. That's all I have.
Chief, what will happen to the replaced camera systems?
You know, because they're not supported anymore, that's a good question. It's not, it wouldn't be good for resale. We could maybe find a small agency that says we'll use them till they absolutely die and do that, but short of that, somebody that really is dependent upon these devices and are going to use them ongoing, they wouldn't be worth a whole lot to anybody because of their age.
So you'd give it to Ron?
I just want to ask you about something really unrelated. The body camera that the police have, is this something like you record and download it later or it could be live with the department or something like that?
So these are not designed to be live. So these are not designed to be live at all. They are downloaded automatically when we return to the station. So when we get back and we dock the body cameras or with the cars, just parking them, then they're wirelessly, easy for me to say, downloaded into the system. So we don't have the ability to sit there and watch them live at this point. There are systems that could do that. That's a whole different system, but these aren't designed to do that.
Okay.
But we can absolutely bring them up within minutes of recording if we needed to.
Okay, thanks, Chief.
Great, thank you.
Darian, Phase Two.
Hello there. I thought I would start with our parking projects. First one is the EMV parking equipment. I had to look up what EMV means, that it means Euro, Mastercard, Visa. And it's adopting the, of course, European standards for the chip technology, which we're starting to see widespread. There's been a lot of chatter in the last couple of years about whether the requirement will come for us to be chip-friendly in all of our parking facilities. The requirement hasn't come yet, but this project is to prepare us. So when that comes, we have the funds to retrofit the equipment if need be. Truth be told, we'd rather let our equipment age out. And then as we purchase new equipment, of course, that EMV or that chip technology will be included in that new equipment. The second project is the rec center parked lot overlay and creek improvements. And this is consolidating a few different needs and a few different, more or less, projects into one project. This would be a redesign and a reconfiguration of the rec center parking lot to improve circulation. Also, it would include stabilization of the Ralston Creek Bank, which is right along the parking lot's edge. And it would also involve resurfacing of the parking lot, which is, the parking lot seemed better days. So it's sort of wrapping all of those three needs into one project. The third project is just replacement of our electronics in our smart parking meters. They look like your average parking meter, but now they have brains, and we're able to use them with our used credit cards with them. We're able to use passport, and they each have a little computer that uploads to the internet for all transactions. And in a few years, they're going to be reaching the end of their useful life. So this project is planning for their eventual replacement. The casing seemed to be holding up pretty well, but we're anticipating that we're going to need to replace that electronic equipment.
How often do they need replaced?
This would be the first replacement. And by 2021, which is when this project is slated for, they will be about 10 years The fourth project is video cameras for our parking facilities. And this is sort of a twofold project as well, both for, you know, safety and security, but we also are seeking ways that we can elevate our ungated facilities, say across the street at Chauncey Swan, so that we have some of the benefits of our gated facilities, but without the gates, so people can drive in and out. For example, you can do license plate permits, things like that. So this is a project that would help us to control, better control the facility, especially with all the growth in the area at our ungated facilities, and also provide that security as well.
I don't understand. What is the particular benefit that would, in order to you or the facility with the video?
So it could be a...
The gated versus ungated.
Okay. You could use cameras, not just to record what's happening, but they could be license plate reader cameras as well. So when a car enters a facility, for anyone who has a parking permit, for example, across the street, you would drive into the ramp if you have a city permit. We would read your license plate with the camera. It would know, the system would know you're parked there and you have a permit and you're allowed to be there. If you're not, if you're just a guest, say, I don't have a parking permit and I drive in, it reads my license plate and it knows within 15 minutes, we should expect a transaction at one of our pay-on-foot stations. So then it aids in enforcement.
That's actually a very significant issue. Do we have privacy? We're not uploading that license plate information to any other law enforcement agency. That would not be used to track, correct? Because anytime someone talks about license plate reading, privacy alarm bells, I think, going off. So this would just be just related to payment, to ensure that payment occurs. It would not be shared with law enforcement, correct?
Well, I guess that's to be determined. The capacity would be there. I mean, in terms of sharing with police enforcement...
In other words, would this be, all of a sudden, you get a report on a license plate number? We would then share this with other agencies?
I guess that's a good question.
Well, that's something I'm going to follow up on.
Yeah, I haven't, I hadn't thought that through, but it was, from our perspective, I think that primarily, it would allow us to control, it would allow all the benefits, the user benefits of having an ungated system, meaning you don't have to stop in front of the gate, get your ticket.
Just in terms of the payment, yeah.
Yeah, it makes it more efficient to get in and out of the system, and it allows us to use it for parking enforcement.
Rockne, I would follow up on that. I don't, we haven't had any conversations about directly feeding that and proactively looking for violations other than parking violations. But we do, we do have a need to better monitor our decks for public safety purposes. We've had several incidents in decks, and then we've had some very high-profile cases where cameras in the decks could have really helped our police investigation. So some of the recent murder cases involved trying to track vehicles around decks. So there may be cases in which investigations lead us to want to access some of those cameras and look for that stuff. Certainly, as we get more into the planning for this particular project, we can have that public discussion. Frankly, we're going to have to have some of that discussion here soon as we get ready to launch some of the downtown public safety cameras that we're proposing.
But I can follow up, yeah, sure.
You mean, like unless there is a problem, you're not going to go and investigate all those plates and find out?
Correct.
Okay.
The number five project is parking enforcement vehicles. And this is, this is an example of one of our current vehicles that's got license plate reader technology that we just use for, to determine if there's vehicles in, it's basically used for parking enforcement, is what I should say. So we're hoping to expand to another parking enforcement vehicle with this license plate technology, and that would also help us improve our enforcement and again, in our ungated facilities. So this would be more or less partnered with the cameras in the ungated facilities to help improve our enforcement and make it more efficient. And we could also use it for street storage and odd-even parking and some, to help address some of our neighborhood parking issues in the near downtown areas. And the last project in terms of parking is simply just updating our automated parking equipment. It's been about 10 years, maybe 11 years by the time we get to this project, that we automated our first facility, and I think it's been very successful. It helps people get in and out faster. There's been many reasons it's been great, but the equipment is aging out. And so we have a project to ramp by ramp, start to replace that equipment. About 10 years is about the expected lifespan. We're at a point now where we're starting to invest a lot more staff time due to customer service issues related to our equipment. So I think we're experiencing sort of the backside of the efficiency and the savings with the, with the equipment. So it's really getting time to make these, make these equipment upgrades. All right, moving on to transit. Number seven is our transit equipment facility relocation. So this project involves construction of a new transit and equipment facility for our maintenance operations and storage. The storage area, the plan is to explain, expand the storage area, allowing for increased fleet size. We're really hamstrung at this current point. We've, we can't expand at all at our current location. We are, based on our building size, we just aren't able to expand. We've outgrown it. The equipment has reached the end of its useful life, the built-in equipment at the facility. And due to the subsidence issues on the property, we're not really able to expand to accommodate future growth for our transit facility. So that's why we have a transit facility project within the CIP. This is also a project where we are actively seeking federal funds. We did submit a grant proposal last August. We did not receive that grant, but we're going to keep at it. So this is, this is, we'll just keep looking for federal funds where we can find them under whichever rock we can find them under. So we're staying on the case. Again, due to the subsidence issues, this is our transit facility parking lot asphalt overlay. You could see this is the, I can't remember if this is the back of the, this looks like the back of the building. Because of the subsidence issues, we have to periodically keep putting down asphalt so that the buses do not get hung up as the land around the actual building sinks. So we have to come through every few years and just lay down some more asphalt so that buses can get in and out easily. So that's what this project is. Transit Mobile Column Lift. If you can believe it, we have lifts. The lift bus is just like that. The one that we're using currently is in our facility, and it was original with the 1983 facility, and it's reaching, certainly reaching the end of its useful life. And we're getting to the point where we're afraid we will not be able to repair it if we can't, we won't be able to find replacement pieces for it, more or less. This is why the Transit Mobile Column Vehicle Lift would be, we've wise-purchased at this point because we can move this. We could replace our one in our facility currently, but when we eventually, hopefully, get a new facility, this can go with it. So it's a piece that we'd be able to move rather than duplicating that expenditure. And last but not least, the Muscatine Avenue pedestrian and transit amenities. We've heard concerns from pedestrians in the Muscatine corridor, and we're talking east of First Avenue, that it can be difficult to get across the street north and south. There's not a lot of dedicated crossings, and so this project really ties in two things. One, it's installing an accessible mid-block crosswalk with pedestrian, excuse me, pedestrian refuge area on Muscatine between Wade and Williams. So this is more or less adjacent to the Hy-Vee. And also installing new bus shelters at this location. So it would really help increase the pedestrian amenities and the transit amenities in a very high-use corridor.
Okay, any questions for Darian?
Thank you.
I'm going to talk a little bit about the one finance project we have. And this is an IT project. It's a citywide software project for an infrastructure asset management system. Like I said, it's a software package that we're really working jointly with the Public Works Department on. And it's in order to track the underground utilities and other infrastructure assets, track maintenance, replacement. And this will help coordinate the management of those assets citywide. And we currently do not have a single citywide management system, and so this will really work across all the departments and also work with our geographical, geographical information system, excuse me, geographical information system. I don't know if you want to add anything, Jason or Ron, to that?
No. So currently, our Water Division uses Cartograph, which is, you know, is that, is a system which, as we look at vendors, would be a potential vendor for the system. But we have, in Public Works, we have two intense users, and that's for our sign inventory and then also the Water Division. And so as we, as we move into a better way to, you know, where our facilities are, but then also know the life, dealing with water main breaks, it's been a huge asset for us there. But then also, as we look at expanding those systems, being able to pass that information on to the designers.
What's next?
You're familiar with this one? This is the Behavioral Access Center. You see a total cost of 6.5 million. That's just an estimate. Our contribution is only 2.5 million, and that's cash on hand, ready to go when all the agreements are worked out.
Are there any recurring contributions to the Behavioral Access Center?
Not that's been discussed to date.
I think all of their services should be billable, with the exception of maybe one or two of them, but most of the services would be billable.
They're still working through that.
Yes.
A lot.
Agreed.
So the last section is the on-the-radar section. So these are the projects that aren't in the current plan, but they're ones that we see as significant projects coming up in the next five, 10, plus or minus years. First one being the Burlington Street Bridge. This was one that we actually had looked at, potential federal funding for a grant program. In the end, it ended up not being a good fit and didn't receive funding with that program. But what we'd be looking at here is, as you may be aware, there's actually two bridges in this location. The north one is actually the DOT's bridge. The south one is a city-owned bridge. So what we would look at is improvements here, potentially combining those. So going with one structure would be a joint project with the DOT. We've had preliminary discussions with them to see if that might be a good fit. Seems like, at this point, they'd be receptive, at least in, in having that conversation. There's also with the dam and university utilities, city utilities, there's a lot of stuff going on in that corridor. So will be a significant project when it comes time. And I think as far as funding, we'd probably be looking in the ballpark of what was with the recent Park Road Bridge that was completed. Not necessarily the same design, but it's going to be that scale of project. Macaulster Boulevard, as we mentioned earlier, the extension from Gilbert Street to Sycamore. This would be the next section to the east, so it would extend Macaulster from Sycamore to Scott Boulevard. Park Road Reconstruction, this is one that unfortunately didn't make it in the program, but this is one that we, especially with the recent completion or significant portions of the Gateway Project being complete, this is one that gets a fair amount of attention from time to time from local residents needing significant work from pavement as well as some utility upgrades in the area. This one has been mentioned a little bit as well. This is the Carson Lake Regional Storm Sewer. So this would be a regional storm, stormwater basin. Again, this is south of Rarrett, west of Highway 218. As that development occurs, I think the plan really is a regional stormwater facility in this area. Taft Avenue Reconstruction, this again is one that comes up from time to time. We receive comments, complaints about the current condition of Taft Avenue. We've actually split it into kind of three sections, I think. With whatever project we end up doing, would likely have to be broken up into segments. But that would be all the way from Herbert Hoover Highway down to 420th Street. Currently, it's a rural section. There's portions that are chip-sealed, portions that are gravel. Those would be, this project would include reconstruction of that to an urban standard. The Highway 6 Trail from Broadway to Sycamore Street, this would really be extending pedestrian and trail facilities along the south side of Highway 6, again, for this stretch.
Well, the parks ones on this, the first one is East Side Sports Complex, as we talked about before. Has a master plan that was done in 2015 or completed in 2015. The site sits out there. We'll be doing tree planting, but the question of what, when or what happens there. Lower City Park, also a master plan completed in 2015 to flood-proof or make it more flood-tolerant. We've been slowly doing parts of this plan. The baseball fields have some renovations coming up. The playground is being moved. Three of the unused or low-use fields were moved out last spring. So we're slowly making progress there, but this plan and the larger project would raise the road and make even more of the park usable no matter, during most flooding situations. This is a general category for swimming pool renovations. And as you know, we have three pools, Robert A. Lee Downtown, Mercer Park Indoor Pool, and then City Park Pool. The City Park Pool is one of the oldest pools in the state of Iowa, which has been kept operational for a long time. But I just want to have it on the radar screen that eventually, especially Robert A. Lee and City Park Pool, will need some renovation or some replacement at some point, not too far down the road.
I'll just point out, if you, and I don't have the exact page on funded list, but we have identified dozens and dozens of unfunded projects. These are things that we've identified or perhaps that we've had residents call and inquire about. We note those, and we try to provide a rough estimate of cost. So it's kind of interesting to flip through. You'll see a lot of projects that I think you'd shake your head and say, yeah, that'd be great if we could do that. And it just goes to show the resources that we could put to use if we had.
It's page 588.
Okay, does anybody have any questions or observations they want to make about the CIP, the draft CIP?
I just think staff, as usual, has done a great job of prioritizing, you know, where we need to spend our money. And I think with Dennis's help, trying to put together a CIP program that kind And I think with Dennis's help, trying to put together a CIP program that kind of spreads out our geo-bonding so that we don't have super highs and super lows. I don't know, two or three years out, we've got one that's a little bit lower, but we'll probably find a way to fill it. There's always things to do. So I just appreciate the work because it's kind of like putting together a puzzle. I mean, we have more work to do than we can possibly fund or than we have personnel to handle for a lot of these things. And so it's kind of prioritizing. I'm glad that we're going to have a consultant come in and help us with kind of the analysis of the streets and maybe, maybe a better plan there. I mean, there's things I didn't hear today that, you know, I always hear about Prairie DuChene and, you know, other roads and stuff like that. I hear people complain about Rochester, et cetera. And so to be able to have a little more concrete plan and say, yeah, this analysis has been done, this is kind of when, when that's going to be planned out for. But overall, I just really want to thank staff for a great plan.
My only comment, too, is I feel that the, these projects are really spread evenly throughout the community. You've always done a good job of that, but I think this really underscores that you really prioritize the needs throughout the community. And as we looked at those, the map and the coloring in terms of the numerical projects that you put in here, it really did get the sense that the east side, west side, north side, south side, we really got an equal share of the funds. I think you did a great job of that. Also briefly related to the pool, you know, I love our City Park Pool. I sort of say it's elegant, and part of me likes that. But it really does need some more stuff. And you think for like young families, as they're looking at evaluating whether they move to a community, that experience at a pool is a big part of it. I love going there, but I'm like in my 40s. So hopefully, we can get it a little bit more where, you know, the 10-year-olds and teenagers will have a few more bells and whistles. I know that will be a long time in the future. And finally, the Burlington Street Bridge, that's sort of been one of the holy grails for the biking community in terms of getting that access. So hopefully, in the future, you really sort of think about that and work with them. And it's good to see that we have been working with the bike community in terms of these various projects to make sure that we're really implementing the Bike Master Plan. So great work. I second Susan.
So I'm struck by a couple of things, as usual. One is the, from the outside, it's hard to recognize how much money has to go into the maintenance and repair and upgrading of basic infrastructure that has to do with water, sewer, roads, you name it. So it's only by going through a presentation like this that we can really get a sense of the scope and cost of doing that kind of upgrading and maintenance and repair. So that's one thing. The second thing that leaps out at me is the interaction between the provision of basic infrastructure, water, sewer, roads, and the development of land. So the fact that there's that sewer, you showed us a map of the one sewer crossing over Highway 218 or I-380, whatever it's called, is a huge step. I know that there are property owners and developers who've been wanting to build on that land that can't do it without water and sewer. So this opens up a big swath of land once that sewer line is built. Likewise, the one that runs by New Hoover and goes southwest from New Hoover School. Again, that opens up land in a particular way. So it's really important to recognize how important those bits of infrastructure are for what happens to the overall shape and form, et cetera, of the city over time. Yeah, those are a couple of thoughts that come to mind.
Yeah, I'll add a couple, too, and sort of along the same themes. And that would be, you know, for every asset we have, it's a liability. As we expand our, our infrastructure and address issues such as parks and bike lanes and so forth, all of these have a cost associated with them. And so it becomes a question of managing those liabilities, making sure we have the revenues to maintain them and can keep them in good repair and replace them when necessary in a timely fashion. It's, it's kind of a scary situation, I'd have to say. I mean, I forget what the overall amount was for the unfunded projects. I was...
Two hundred and something million. Three mil, 342.
Yeah, it's kind of, it's kind of...
It's $2 million, I'd like to add.
And it went up quite a bit from last year. So it's almost, because it's unfunded, we don't really pay a great deal of attention to it. I guess we pay some, but these things aren't going away. And in fact, their costs are escalating. So I'm pleased to see, as Susan said, we're, and I mentioned it earlier on in our budget discussions, that I feel we are, we are improving on our oversight in terms of this question of costs, revenues, developing a plan so that we can, when asked, say, oh yeah, we'll be getting to that in, you know, 2030 or something, as we are with the bike plan and the park plan. I think, you know, that's a great model.
One clarification, I think I know the answer, but Dennis, when we bond for any water and wastewater improvements, those are all paid off out of the enterprise funds, out of the fees?
Those are covered with our revenue bonds, which are covered by those utility fees.
Okay, thank you, Soya.
I want to make an observation about the photograph we see here of the Burlington Street Bridge, the part that's owned by the city of Iowa City. I would hope that once funds are available to do that reconstruction and it's done, and once Dodge Street is rebuilt, that we work with the state to have the ownership and responsibility for Highway 1, or that part of Highway 1, Dodge Street and Burlington Street, transferred to the city of Iowa City. Now, Ron, I know you and I have talked about that before. Because that would enable us to do all sorts of things to Burlington Street in terms of transforming it into a boulevard rather than just a thing full of fast-moving traffic. I think there's huge opportunity there, and we can't take that opportunity. You've persuaded me, Ron, we can't take that opportunity until we get ownership of the bridge. I'm, yeah, you know what I mean? Yeah, sorry. Go ahead.
I would just disagree, because I think what we take on, in the short term, it sounds great, but that means 20, 30, 40, 60 years out, the city has all of the financial responsibility for all of the maintenance and repair of very expensive bridges and very expensive roads. So while it gives us some opportunity to do some things, I think the financial liability on the city in the decades and decades to come would not be worth it.
But some other traffic route would become Highway 1. I don't know what that route is. I know there, can't, you know better than I do, but there have been possibilities explored. Yeah, so I don't want to make a big deal out of it.
I think the, perhaps another, another option, and I know other state DOTs have programs within their, their capital plans for addressing context sensitivity. So it's not just this Burlington reaming out the downtown, but Burlington adapting as it moves through the downtown. I think, you know, I worked on a project in San Francisco, which won a Caltrans Award. It was the replacement of the Central Freeway by a surface boulevard. It was a transformative project. Burlington could be a transformative project.
Yeah, that'd be a better solution, to have the state enable us to do the transformation.
Just allow us to acknowledge that it's moving through the center of Iowa City.
Okay, other comments or questions for staff?
Thanks for making it in usable terms for the newbie. And even Ron and the digester explanation. Now, like Rockne, I can tell people...
I already knew what that was.
What it means.
Have you done a tour of the wastewater treatment plant?
I have not.
Sign him up, seriously. Get him out there.
Full tour of the...
Water plant, too.
Yes.
Okay.
Just point out that the presentation that you see here is, will be available on the web. We probably need to clean up a few small things. Want to make sure that you are comfortable with where projects lay. So we'll give that a little bit of time in case you think of something as you digest all this information. But then we'll make it available to the public, and it's really slick to use, just clicking through the tabs. You can kind of go to your neighborhood and view the projects that are upcoming.
That's great.
Very good.
I just have to say, I think this is my 10th or 11th budget session I've sat through, and they keep getting better and better in terms of just the way they're organized and now with the technology of the locations and stuff that we asked for two or three years ago. So, great job.
Yeah, the map is new. When did we start doing the map? Was that two years ago?
Last year, we experimented.
Okay, because I know we had talked about that as an equity toolkit piece, and to see that in picture, I think, is fantastic. So great work.
I also like the change summary.
Yes, yes. Very helpful.
Okay, folks, thanks for the great job. Thank you for your help.